I'd like to call to order the March 26, 2018 Exeter Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of the flag.
I pledge to the interest of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Sam, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Lloyd?
Here.
Supervisor Spees?
Here.
Supervisor Vanderlin?
Here.
Supervisor Cusadis?
Here.
Here.
All right, we'll start with public comment. Ms. Riley, before you come up, just letting you know there will not be a vote on the sewer plant this evening, but if you'd like to come up and make your comment, please feel free to do so. Well, you can come up and talk about it. We're gonna take, since everybody came out, we didn't know until late in the day that they would not be able to make a vote on it. There's an APA, it's an assets appurchase agreement, which is part of the RFP process that is supposed to be submitted to the township, and it has not been finalized. Correct, Sam?
Yeah, I mean, it's just an outstanding legal issue that we have to finalize.
So, if you would like...
Will the vote be taken?
Hopefully, in two weeks, but that won't be done before that's done. So, if you'd like to speak this evening, you may. If not, you can hold your comment.
But it was based on your vote, so if you end up voting differently than what my comments refer to, then you have my apologies. Let me start with a quote.
It's not on.
Do you need it?
Okay. Do you name an address, Sam?
Dorothy Riley, R.E.I.L.L.Y., 13 Craig Drive. Let me start with a quote. "I wouldn't consider selling the sewer plant, point blank. I want to make sure it's operating how it should, and if it is not, find ways to do that." That was from an article in 2015, and I'm quoting you, Lisa. So, I guess things have changed. Promises, promises. "It certainly seems that you have contempt for your residents by making sure that we are ill-informed, while at the same time you have no problem wasting their valuable time pretending to care about what their input is by holding a special meeting when it is so obvious that the decision has been made. And if you had a vote set for tonight, it certainly looked like that was the case." Several people I spoke with said that since you were already planning to vote tonight, they decided there was no reason to come as it was obviously already a done deal. I am not sure why I'm here either. What?
Sorry, Riley, just speak loudly.
Does that mean it's not on the record?
There you go. It was working when you just talked into it.
This is working? No.
All right. Oh, okay. Thanks.
That better?
Yeah. Um, excuse me. I'm not...
She's not speaking.
Not, you still can't hear me?
I can hear you.
On.
I just really would like this to be on the record as long as...
It'll be on, it'll be on the record.
We have a right to hear what she's saying.
Well, if you'd be quiet, you can listen, you probably can hear her.
We'll see if these batteries work. There you go, buddy. We need two. Calm down, calm down.
Thank you. Actually, I'm not sure why I'm here. I haven't been involved in many years, although I always used to come, but I'm angry. I'm angry because of having dealt with Pennsylvania American for many years. We fought, I was with Exeter residents for Clean Air, and we fought the composting facility that was giving people headaches, bloody noses, and horrible odors. And then we fought Pennsylvania American because they were going to take water from the Schuylkill River upstream of where the chemical plant was contaminating the water. So, and other problems we've had with them since, with odors and all sorts of problems. Someone else mentioned at the special meeting, which is why I didn't bring it up. "It feels like it's all been for show," which is particularly noticeable in that you gave an incomprehensible presentation without putting information out prior to the meeting, and I don't mean the night before, "that could have been studied, allowing informed questions and comments." You didn't even give out a handout until you were questioned about it, and then only one per table, which was useless if one was trying to read it and pay attention to the presentation at the same time. And if you really wanted input from lots of residents for such an important issue, why not use your robocall system? If we can get calls on possible impending snowstorms, then it should be no problem to inform us of special important meetings. And when you were asked at the meeting, when you would be voting on this, no one answered that, and yet, here it was on the agenda. It was also quite obvious, your intention, when there were eight or so representatives of Pennsylvania American Water Company, but no one to present the alternative proposal that you said you received, and you gave no details about it, other than it was a lower If taxes or sewer bills had been raised even slightly each year, most people would probably have not even noticed it, but then you all seem to think that saying you are not raising taxes will get you re-elected. And meanwhile, we are now in one hell of a hole with sewer rates having gone up 58% at the end of 2016, with another 29% on top of that. New rates will be implemented on that, because the new rates will be implemented before the deal with Pennsylvania American is finalized. So, using the figures that you had in your presentation, if one sewer bill was $284 before 2016, after the 58% increase, your bill would be $448. If we apply the 29% increase to that amount, your new bill will be $577, which is more than double, or 104%. Keep in mind that the new amount will be the basis used when Pennsylvania American goes to the PUC for increases, and the PUC has shown that it is not there to protect the consumer, as historically Pennsylvania American has received close to the exorbitant amount they ask for every single time. And I was there, and I was hoping that you would have been there, this last meeting, and nobody from the township supervisor showed up at the last hearing that the PUC had, asking for, yeah, more money. So, if you are selling to a company that already gouges its water customers, we pay twice as much as a neighboring community, the neighboring community of Mount Penn that has municipal water, and the quality is less than optimum, and these rates are to keep their shareholders and their executives happy, instead of a municipal company that has only its taxpayers to beholden to, then you again are showing contempt for the residents you are supposed to be representing. Where do you think people who don't get raises, who are on fixed incomes, are supposed to come up with that huge increase in such a short period of time? And by the way, our wastewater charge is based on our water usage, and yet, not all water that comes into the house goes down the drain, watering plants, waters that go into coffee pots, filters, humidifiers, so already, we're being overcharged. And then we get to the promise of lowering our tax bills to make up for the increase. And I must say, I am very confused about this supposed Homestead Act saving us money. Is this separate from the school district property tax that you're talking about?
Yes.
So, this is...
Municipal.
Municipal tax? Why, if that is the case, why wasn't this done years ago to lower our taxes, if we could do it under the Homestead Act?
If you have some questions, ask for questions, and I'll try to give you answers to your questions, but go ahead and finish your statement, Ms. Riley.
Yeah, I have one more question about, you know, one of the reasons it looks like our taxes are so high, and that what our money is being used for are very high legal bills for the township, and I'd love to know why they are quite as high, in the hundreds of thousands, it looks like. Also, how do you propose to sell a public asset without having it assessed first? And since the wastewater treatment facility is a public property and a public utility, and the taxpayers paid for its construction, operation and maintenance, those taxpayers should have a say in whether or not it is sold, and who it is sold to. Where is it exactly in the second-class township code that you cannot put a referendum on the ballot? I couldn't find it, but maybe I missed it. And can it be overridden by the state? And is this the slippery slope leading to the sale of other public assets, like fire stations, police department, libraries? All I know is you're selling us to the wolves. You made one comment at the last, the last meeting, you said something about that we shouldn't spread rumors, but there are a lot of rumors going around, and at some point, you could tell us when they should be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. The one question that comes up, and it was asked at the last meeting, is about the, why wasn't the Homestead Act not implemented years ago, because there's a cost associated with that. The Homestead Act is a reduction in your property taxes, so that is money that comes, that directly affects the general fund. So, if you implement a tax break, it's no different than if you, so $50,000 would be, in a Homestead Act, would be no different if we dropped the general millage for the same amount of money. The issue with that is, then we still have to find the money to pay for everything that we have to pay for. The reason that we can, we would be able to enact the Homestead Act for this is because the proceeds, should the plant sell from the sewer plant, would, we could use some of those proceeds, or the investment income from investing those proceeds, to offset the loss that we would incur to the general fund from the tax. Your name and, your name and physical address, Ms. Riley?
My name is Keith Golembeski, and I live at 4540 Green Tree Road.
Can you spell your last name, Mr. Golembeski, please?
Yes. It's G.O.L.E.M.B.I.E.W.S.K.I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. First of all, I don't know how many people in the room here know, why are we trying to sell the treatment plant? After a 58% increase, I think we should either be breaking even or making money. And now, to sell this, we have to add 29% more on to sell it to a company who probably in a year from now will ask for another increase. I mean, I'm on a fixed income, there's no doubt about it, and a lot of these people are, and our taxes are high. I mean, mine is, anyway. It's hard for me to get everything together. I get a small pension, and I get social security, so you know, it's kind of tough. So, I rarely attend these meetings, but when I just read that we were gonna try to sell the treatment plant, I thought, why? It belongs to us. Why would we sell it, especially after the increase? So, I guess my question is, why? Does everybody else here know why we're doing that? I just don't understand it. I mean, if it's a, if it's a money issue, and you can make more money by selling it, then I think it should be up to the residents to be in on this, and who we're gonna sell it to, because American Water, I do not favor, and a lot of other people here do not favor them either, because of the service we get from them.
Thank you, Mr. Golembeski.
You're welcome.
So...
What was the screen?
Oh, Green Tree Road.
So, obviously, the municipal government of Exeter Township is not a for-profit business as a nonprofit. The sewer plant money, everybody seems to be under the illusion that the sewer plant makes money. The sewer plant doesn't make money, and if the sewer plant did make money, it can't be removed from the sewer plant. So, if you guys pay, anybody that's on the system pays a rental rate, that's your sewer rate. That money goes into the operations of that sewer plant. That money can't be taken out and used for something else, because the township wants to, you know, fix a park, or, you know, put in a road, or, you know, have extra plowing and stuff like that. That's not the way it works. Sewer plant is not a cash cow for the township. As I stated, I don't know if you were at the, at the special meeting that we had last week about it...
I didn't know, I didn't want it until someone else told me, you better, you better go there.
In 2015, in November, there was a sewer plant budget meeting, workshop meeting. In those meetings, several red numbers were, the plant was operating at a large deficit. The 58% increase is due to the fact that an increase of 15% was requested in 2010, and the board of supervisors at that time opted not to implement a 15% increase. They implemented a 7.5% increase, and said that within next year that they would revisit again, and they didn't. If that board of supervisors had increased the rates 15% in 2010, this board would have only had to have raised your rates 11.8% instead of 58%. The sewer plant, the newest part of the sewer plant is now, I think, 24 years old. If we pay the debt through, including the interest, it's about $30 million in debt. The equipment is aging, and we have a lot of major investments to make into the plant, which is going to mean, so the reality of the situation is, is that what we are trying to look at doing is options, as being responsible, options to make sure that, whether the township does it, or somebody else does it, that we can continue to provide a high level of service at the sewer plant. Your rates are gonna go up, whether PA American Water buys this plant, or whether the township owns it. That 58% increase that was implemented at the end of 2016, for 17, was only good for three years. We already know that by 2021 or 2022, the township has to raise the rates approximately 23% to keep ahead. The fact of the matter is, employees, cost, debt service, everything goes up. It's no different than any other company or any other thing, regardless of whether the township owns it. The rates should have been keeping pace, and the rates weren't. It's as simple as that. If the township sells the plant, if the board of supervisors opts to sell the plant, there's an option here that we would be able to give back money to the residents through different tax things, like the Homestead Act, and for the average consumer who uses 12,000 gallons, I think it's based on, right? It would net about $43 back into your pocket, in a positive. But the fact of the matter is, is that eventually, with a PA American Water, your rates will go up. If the township keeps it, your rates are gonna go up, and your taxes are gonna go So, let's move on to minutes for February 26. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for February 26, 2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
This isn't the minute, this isn't the meeting I missed, right? No, it's not. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Minutes for March 12, 2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll be abstaining from this, I wasn't present.
No, Dave was here.
No, you weren't at, you weren't at the 26th meeting. Did you abstain from that?
Yeah, dude.
All right, Sam, how do we fix that? We took a vote to approve the minutes, and David didn't abstain for the 26th.
He just noted an abstention.
What's wrong, Glenn?
Glenn Hoover, 10 Annie's Acres, Burgess, I'd like to make a comment on the minutes of the 12th that you have there now.
Okay.
It was my understanding, when I left here, that there was going to be handouts for that meeting, and that was from you, in our conversation, and I'd just like to reflect to you that I'm very disappointed in the way that was handled.
Was that after the meeting, Glenn?
Excuse me?
I'm talking to you upfront, Glenn. Was that from the, you talking about something that was said during the meeting, or after the meeting?
No, during the meeting here, when...
On the 12th?
Yeah, I asked John if he would be able to have...
I can't hear you, we have the mic on.
It's on, it's on.
No, the other guy. You can hear him. Your mic's off.
No, it's on, it just, it just makes a lot of noise.
Hello? Yeah, I said that John would try to make handouts available. I obviously wasn't there that night. I thought there were handouts that were gonna be made available of the PowerPoint.
When I, I asked for that for a reason, and I respected your reply. I thought it was a sensible question, asking for a handout, so we could follow that. But when I went to the meeting, I approached John, John says there isn't any.
Glenn, Sam doesn't work here on a day-to-day basis. The failure of there to be handouts at the meeting is not Sam's fault.
But he commented to me on it, and that's why, I wondered why it didn't happen. I just felt it was unfair, because there's very few times I asked for anything, and I get treated like that. I thought that was very unfair.
Yeah, but that's not, it's not Sam's fault. It's everybody else's fault. He wasn't there. Well, I mean, listen, I don't mind there being criticism levied where criticism is due, but it's, you don't work in the building, it's not your fault that there weren't handouts at a meeting that you weren't even at.
Then I'll use it as a reference.
Yell at me.
Then I'll use it as a reference. You made, you made the suggestion that it never happened, but I was very disappointed, because I trust you, and that's what happened. I would have just liked that, to have that to follow through.
Can I make a question, please? Thank you, Glenn.
I apologize if it wasn't done. If anybody takes responsibility, it's me. The report was done late in the day, and I didn't feel we had enough time to make the copies. I felt that if we'd make the presentation, put it on a website, we'd have enough opportunity to discuss it at that time. I was not aware that the board was gonna take action at tonight's meeting at that time when I made that decision.
And we ended up not making, taking action on it tonight, in any case.
Right.
Do you have copies, were copies made available to the public?
Copies are available in the township building, for anyone who wants to come in, they're at the front desk, and they were on the website.
Thank you, Glenn. Now, how do we fix the minutes? We just approved minutes, and he didn't, he didn't abstain.
Yes, but he changed his vote to an abstention, so we can note the change to an abstention.
Okay.
On the February 26 vote.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second on the March 12th? Gary, did you say something? Okay.
I thought there was a motion on the second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. That's me. Minutes for the special meeting, March 13, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. So, we're tabling number one...
Disbursements.
Oh, disbursements, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the disbursements?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. So, we're tabling number one. Number two, set public hearing date and authorize advertisement of amendments to zoning ordinance. John?
Madam Chair, this is on a previous agenda for discussion, and board recommended it be placed on this agenda for further discussion. We're in a position to get direction from the board if there's additional changes. We did make one or two minor changes to the subdivision ordinance, and to get direction to advertise for the public hearing, and then advertise for the ordinance, and change in the map, there'll be two separate ordinances.
Do you actually, unlike some things, need more than 30 days, because you have to notify all the, all the affected property owners?
Yes, all property owners affected by the zoning map change, we'll get a letter, the board will get a copy of it tomorrow, notifying them of the changes, they'll get a copy of all the ordinances and the map, and the hearing date, proposed hearing date is May 14. And it just takes time to make sure that everyone gets the notice. There'll also be signs posted around the zoning, where the zoning changes are gonna take place on the map, so the public and the property owners are also notified.
All right. You guys wanna talk about this first, or make a motion? Yep.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Everybody's pretty clear on this, and they've gotten any comment, they've reviewed it, any comments they had, they've gotten back? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Set public hearing date and authorize advertisement of amendments to subdivision and land development ordinances. John?
Madam Chair, this is a complimentary ordinance, amending the subdivision ordinance, the sets, the items such as...
I'm sorry, you said May 14.
May 14, yes. Such as setting the standards for parking lots, and that physical characteristics related to the changes in the zoning ordinance that would be effective in the previous motion. So, we do need a public hearing on this as well, and we might as well have it the same night.
And you do the same notification?
No, this, this does not get notified to the public.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, set public hearing date and authorize subdivision land development ordinance.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Discussion on Park and Recreation Master Plan.
Madam Chair, the master park and recreation plan, master plan, has been circulated to the board, it's been posted on the website. I mean, it's time to have a conversation. I don't wanna go into great length this time, at this meeting, I was hoping to do more of that conversation at the next meeting, but just generally speaking...
Can you have a special meeting for that?
If you wanna have a special meeting for it, you can set a special meeting date for that as well. It is a, the process going forward is very prescribed by the state. There will be a public hearing, there will be a special meeting, with the appropriate time, notification, I believe it's either 30 or 45 days in advance.
You have a broad overview of the plan?
Yes. The plan addresses the recreation and park needs of the entire township. There was a committee established, working with the consultant, they did some interviews, there was a survey posted on the website, the results of the survey are contained in the plan itself, and have been posted on the website with the plan. Essentially, it said, the existing township parks need some renovation, if that's the most appropriate word to use. There could be some additional space for active recreation, but by and large, passive recreation needs can be further expanded. A trail system throughout the township, either on or off-road, or a combination of both, could be looked at. There was a recommendation to work with the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission with respect to the... There was a recommendation to work with the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission with respect to the land they own at the Daniel Boone Homestead, which is extensive and that's later on the agenda for discussion. By and large, it said that the recreation and/or the park system is in, not in terrible condition, it doesn't have a lot of needs, but there are some needs to be addressed. It's not like a growing community where, you know, a thousand people moved into the township last year and they need a bunch of parks. What you really need is to upgrade your park system, look for any opportunities that may present itself. Recreation system needs some additional attention paid to it. It's primarily two or three events a year, some recreation programs very well receive this, I understand in the community. It's just a matter of upgrading some of the offerings to the community and expanding the offerings for the community itself, but also of the age population. So that it's for all the people, not just for a specific age group.
Not just for kids.
Yes. And I think, you know, they did a bus tour to the Flower Show this year, they'll do one in October to go to a beer festival. I think those are steps in the right direction in terms of doing some offerings around for the other age groups in the community.
So, you would like, how detailed is, considering how much we may have on the next agenda, how detailed is the master plan? Do we need to have a special meeting for that or do you want to handle it at a regular meeting?
I would suggest that maybe, let me get a couple of dates for the next meeting, here's the date for the special meeting, you have to have one, so you might as well do it at the same time, I just wasn't aware of the specific number of days. And then we can have a brief conversation there, but the most important one would be at the public hearing.
Yeah, it's a big-
We should have a special meeting.
It's a big deal, it's a big deal. One second. Anything else? Sir? Your name and physical address please.
My name is Bill Jager, it's 4815 Portage Drive. I just want to mention, I'm on the committee with John and a few others regarding the Parks and Recreation Plan. It is very detailed, extremely detailed, 100 pages, okay? I read over it, I think it's well done. The one thing I would like to say to the group and to everyone here, I don't want to see taxes raised to get some of the things done that's in there. One of the reasons we had to have this master plan done was to be able, and one of the questions I asked Simon was, why that's such an extensive master plan? One of the reasons was because that's the way you get grants, through some of the different things. So, the plan covers a lot of, there were a lot of good ideas at the meetings, even the public meetings. And I think one of the key things to bring in the community is to show that we have a Parks and Recreation, a good development, and to get, like it was stated, everybody involved. And I think some of the things that are expressed in the document, the 100-page document, is the fact that, you know, some of these things can be accomplished with the, with some of the groups. Here in the, in the social churches, civic groups, schools, get the school groups involved to get some of the things done, some of the minor things, not the major. We know that's going to take expertise and stuff.
Using the community resources not to be a tax burden, is what you're saying?
Right, right. I was part of the, back in the 90s, I was part of the group and there was mostly sports organizations that developed the Exeter Trout Run Sports Complex. We took it to a certain point, just like anything, we wanted to take to the end, but we couldn't because a lot of our new presidents coming in didn't have that kind of interest and it was falling on two or three of us to get it done, along with the Recreation Director. So, we did, we had a $1, 30-year lease, $1 a year, 30-year lease. We couldn't get it all done and we did turn it over at that time to the Parks and Recreation to complete it. So, that's all I-
Thank you Mr. Jager. Do you have the spelling on his name or do you have it?
J A- Got it. Thank you, one of the things that-
Excuse me, Ms. Riley, one moment please.
Later in the agenda, there'll be a, the board will consider authorizing a contract to do a master plan for Trout Run. We did get a 50% grant to do that work, it was in large part because the state knew-
Of the master plan?
Of the master plan for Trout Run. It was in large part because the state knew we were doing this work.
And that was $18,000, right?
An $18,000 grant. We're also submitting grant applications to two state agencies to do a master plan for Daniel Boone Homestead, I'll speak more to that later. But I think the Trout Run Master Plan will be a plan and will involve a lot of the sports organizations to use that site. And it is an opportunity, I think, really to bring those groups into the planning process, but also into the execution process. It'll take a year to develop a plan and another year to submit a grant application, so you have two years to work on the implementation plan locally, to reach out to the community to help realize that plan, whatever that plan is. So it's a great opportunity, I think, for the community to work together to make something happen there, yes.
Could you talk about the Trout Run Sports?
Yes.
This plan, is that for the existing one or the other one that was?
It is for the Trout Run facility today.
No.
Not for installation basis. Right, okay.
Ms. Riley, if you keep it brief please?
Yeah, I was just wondering if the golf course falls under recreation?
Yes, it does.
So, and you had said at the special meeting that it would be discussed, what you-
At the next, at the next meeting.
April 9th meeting?
Correct? Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on, adopt ordinance for the 2018 through 23 MS4 Steering Committee Intergovernmental Agreement, John?
Madam Chair, this is the ordinance that will permit the township to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the conservation, County Conservation District. Who will work with the other participants in the intergovernmental agreement to develop the educational program for the MS4. The MS4 is the Stormwater Management Plan, we're required by law to do it, we have a five-year permit and the state puts a lot of emphasis on your quality of your work on this program through education. So, the greater educational program we can do, the better, and if we work, everyone does the same public relations campaign, it reduces the unit cost down to practically nothing. We joined, the township has joined the Conservation District a number of years ago, I think the fee's $700 and that fee will cover the cost. I don't believe there'll be any additional cost for the preparation or dissemination of the MS4-
But if there is any additional cost, you'll be coming to the board and discuss that-
I will come to the board, yes ma'am.
Before that's done, regardless of the level of that commitment, correct?
That is correct.
Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance for MS4 Steering Committee Intergovernmental Agreement? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Who's the intergovernmental agreement with?
It's, excuse me, right now it's with the township and the Conservation District and any other municipality that joins in the agreement.
Anybody else have any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. New business. Accept resignation of Donna Hess from the Township Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, we received a letter of resignation from Donna Hess from the Township Planning Commission, it's been the board's practice to accept the resignation.
We would make a motion to accept Donna Hess's- With regrets? Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Ms. Hess resigned because she had a conflict with her work schedule, she could not attend night meetings.
Let Ms. Hess know we're going to miss her, we're sorry that she couldn't stay with us because I know that she was very helpful. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Appointments for Exeter Community Library Board.
I'm looking, trying to catch up here.
Number two, new business.
Madam Chair, there's two vacancies on the library board. Elizabeth Stavinsky Bell and Todd Dirkshield, pardon me if I butchered both of those names, have applied for the board. I did interview both individuals, I also met with the director and the chair of the library board to discuss these appointments. And to recommend that the library change their charter so that the term limits would be excluded. And that is one of the reasons why I think there's been some discussion from-
Apparently what's going on at the, with the library board is they have a term limit of two four-year terms. If you've served for those eight years, then you have to step off of the board. Apparently that's creating an issue. I understand the term limits and why, you know, under normal circumstances and bringing fresh blood and stuff in, but since this township seems to have great difficulty in getting people to volunteer or commit their time or do civic duty type things, we have problems getting people to volunteer for this stuff. And this would be a case of it because one of these people is not a township resident.
That is correct. Ms. Bell is not a township resident.
Well, we asked the library board to go back and see if they could find somebody that could fill this position that was, that was a township resident, and apparently they were not successful in doing so. So, you asked them to do it and they said they will review the charter or?
I asked them and they said they will review their charter. To eliminate the term, they understand the same issue and they will review their charter to determine whether or not it's appropriate for them to eliminate the term limits. I also asked for copies of their minutes, distributed them to the board, so you understand what they're doing as an organization and I have not yet seen this topic come to their agenda. But I will ask that question next week when I meet with their director.
Personally, I appreciate anybody, township resident or not, that's willing to do their time, but I do feel strongly that people that are responsible in formulating recommendations to Exeter Township about its tax powers be people that those recommendations affect, and that is not the case here. That being said, if they can't get anybody else, they can't get anybody else, but doesn't say much for the, doesn't say much, doesn't say much good. In Birdsborough. No, I don't disagree and it's not, like I said, this isn't personal, I just think that, you know, we, the library's a big contribution and I think that we don't have control over the board, this board doesn't have any say other than the budget that we approve or adopt every year and we depend upon them to come to us and make recommendations. I just personally think, and I know that not everybody agrees with that, but I think that those people should be residents. Nonetheless, I'm going to vote for her.
We did.
We advertised-
They were advertised in the website a couple of times.
One of the things the board, the former president who had to step down because he had been on for eight years, I believe, right? Told us that the board, that the library board is very good and they're very conscientious, they try very hard to go to great lengths to try to make sure that they have people that can specialize. This particular placement is a ex-librarian, which is a perfect fit, you know, they try to get people to do all those things. So, I'm just asking that the township follow up with the library to confirm that they are in fact looking at the charter issue, if it's causing, because it's apparently causing them issues with getting people within the community to volunteer.
Correct.
Do you want them appointed separately or together? Want a separate motion or?
No, they can be together.
Is there a motion? That would be Lizbeth Stavinsky Bell and Todd Dirkshield. Shide.
Dirkshidey.
Shidey, thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Will the board join me in asking John to reach back out to the library and ask them to review their charter?
Yes ma'am, have the honor. I do, I don't know.
Means more when you tell them to do it.
Excuse me, I missed that.
Nothing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Appointments to Exeter Township Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, there's two vacancies on a Township Planning Commission.
Well, actually now there's three.
No, two.
Donna just resigned.
Yeah, that's one of the two.
Okay. Yeah, alright, sorry.
It's okay.
My bad.
We put an ad in the notice of vacancies in the newsletter, not newsletter, I'm sorry, the website. We got a number of applicants, I interviewed all the applicants that are recommending Darren Colefish Flesch and Jeffrey Anterton to be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Dude, that would be a really hard name to butcher, Anderton?
Listen, it's lady-
I got you.
Apologize, I'm sorry. I'm sure it's not the first time.
That was the first time it was pronounced like that, so I thought that was interesting.
I get it. And for sake of clarity, Darren is a female.
Okay.
Not that it matters, but just so you understand, okay?
Is there a motion to appoint Darren Coleflesh and Jeff Anderton to the Exeter Township Planning Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Welcome aboard. Adopt resolution authorizing submission of multi-model grant application.
Madam Chair, this is a grant application to DCED for a $3 million grant for the second phase of the Perkyomen Avenue Streetscape Project. It would be from 36th Street to Ole Turnpike. We believe that the application the township submitted last year would be for the lower portion from 36th to East Never Sink and this would continue the project going west.
Where are we on last year's?
Waiting for the governor to make an announcement. That's the best I can tell you, because that's all anybody I've ever talked to knows. They've asked us, we revised, they, we've had communication since we granted the application, or submitted the application. We have revised it along with their request, which is unusual because they don't ask you to revise your proposal if they're not going to give you money.
That was a good sign.
That was a very good sign, but until the governor says something, nobody knows.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Five, adopt resolution authorizing submission of application to DCNR for Daniel Boone Homestead Master Plan. What is DCNR?
DCNR is the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCED is the Department of Economic and Community Development, or Community and Economic Development. This action and the subsequent action on the agenda is for, I hate to say this, for two straight state grant agencies to help fund a master plan for a third state agency. I didn't make it up, it's the way government works.
Why don't you back up and explain that you've had, you had a meeting with the Pennsylvania Historical-
Yes.
Commission about a long-term lease of a large portion of the passive land of Daniel Boone Homestead.
We've had several communications with the Homestead and PHMC, Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission. The commission owns the land, they own about 500 acres of land, a very minor part of it is where the Homestead is and they call it their historic core. They are not interested in expanding the historic core other than doing some minor work that was approved by the board last month for some permits. They are very much interested in working with the township to lease a significant portion of the land to the township, as you know, the township already leases the-
Pineland.
Pineland Park to it, so this is land that surrounds Pineland Park. We are talking in- We are talking in, in the area of 200 to 300 acres of land. Now, in order for the commission to do this, they're very much concerned about the physical view shed when you enter, this is the site from the road on, is it?
When you go look at the old buildings.
Dandenboon Road.
Yes.
They don't wanna see anything beyond the hillside. They wanna maintain what they call the purity of the historic core of the Daniel Boone Homestead. So in order for them to have a high degree of comfort with wherever land they are leasing to the township, they wanna have a master plan on the site to say, to actually draw a line, this is the line, this is the area that we will lease to the township. We are confident that this supports the Homestead's and PHMC's mission, which is the, the core historic value of, of the site. And, you know, they're excited about it. We met with DH, with both state agencies, everybody's lining up on this. If the, both app, if the two state agencies approve this grant, the state will fund the grant in a, at a hundred percent level. There won't be any township expense here other than my time. We go through the same process we go through with the Trout Run Master Plan and the Township Plan, there'll be a committee. We'll, you know, spend a year developing a master plan that'll be pretty comprehensive, some of the stuff the state wants and some of the stuff that the township may be interested in. As I see it, this will be mostly a passive recreation site for the township with some trails in it and maybe an access site for, for, to get onto that part of the, the, the land. I don't view any significant development there be, quite frankly, because it's a challenging piece of ground. And I think this is something that really works in a long-term benefit to the township because you can have a, a significant trail system through that piece of ground, not only for pedestrians, but for horses and things like that. And I think this is a very good opportunity to work with somebody who can do something for you and it won't cost you any money. Hit all your buttons, did.
And you're talking, and you're talking about long-term lease, correct?
A hundred-year lease.
And we lease Pineland Park for a dollar?
$3,000 a year.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a year, sorry. All right. And now everybody has heard about that. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or questions? Good, right? He said, he said exciting news, nice job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Adopt resolution authorizing submission of application for DCED for Daniel Boone Homestead Master Plan. So basically the same explanation, just a different name.
Just a different name, state, different act, different process.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Approve agreement for preparation of Trout Run Master Plan.
Madam Chair, as I said earlier, the township received a $18,000 grant from DCNR to do a master plan for Trout Run, recommending that the board approve a contract with Simone Collins in the amount of 18,000, or $36,000 for this work.
That was a 50% match grant, right?
It's a 50% match grant.
Right.
As all, all planning grants are 50% matched. That's why the two applications preceding were done.
So basically, my point is, is that we said we would do the 50% when we submitted the grant.
That's correct. That is correct.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
This would be the last time that the.
Thank you.
Township uses its planner for a master plan development. If the township is successful in getting a master plan for Daniel Boone, we will do an RFP. It'll take about six months to do, get proposals. That's a big, that's gonna be a big project.
Big project.
That's a $100,000 planning grant, so you need a big RFP for that and, and select a planner for that based on the proposals.
Okay.
And then you would also select a, yeah, that's why.
Any further discussion?
Stupid question maybe, but how do you need a plan for Trout Run? I mean, we know there's additional ground down there, I mean, what's the plan gonna tell you?
Well, I, this is the government process. You develop the plan and the plan gets you the money.
Okay, so it's to get the money.
It's to get the money. It's all it is.
Clearing and, okay.
You, here's the plan.
We did a master recreation plan, that started getting us grants for these things.
Right.
And now these things are gonna get us grants for the actual work.
Instruction. It's a, it's the way government works.
This seems like a lot of.
It is.
It is a lot.
Professionals.
It is, yes. I'll never argue that point.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Disposal of emergency management trailer.
Bet you didn't, we know we had one, didn't you?
Oh, I knew we had one. It's the nastiest thing I think I've ever seen. Is it nasty?
Oh, yes, ma'am. That's why it's disposal is written on the first word there. Several years ago, maybe '14, the township secured a.
Old.
Older trailer from PIMA, FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, as a disaster manage, urgency, emergency management trailer. And it is timed to, for it to be disposed into the trash can.
Been ever used?
Once or twice back in the, before, you know, when I had dark hair. Hasn't been used in the last generation, I think, so.
Never for an emergency.
Never for most.
Never for an emergency.
No. It is good.
So when we say dispose of, we mean like to the junkyard, right? We're, because this thing is.
To the junkyard, and there is some.
Clarence, because this thing is nasty, right? That's you I'm talking to. All right. Do you need a motion? Not worth $500 if it's going to, you want a motion? Do I have a motion?
Please, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Department reports. Matt, chief, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of things I'd like to discuss. We just had on Sunday evening, one of our officers, Officer Rocco DiCamillo, he made a traffic stop behind Sheet, Sinclair Drive in Sunset Manor. When he made that stop, he found some drugs in the car. He found $6,000 worth of, it's one-fourth pound of crystal meth, large quantity of Xanax pills, and an ounce of PCP. An ounce of PCP is about a vial like that, about that thick. I have some pictures up here for you if you wanted to take a look at it. You can just see the bags of the crystal meth. I gave each copy to the board here. You can see the big vial of the PCP and the pills of Xanax. So, you know, the reason why I'm bringing it up is you can see what's going on in our community. It's not, we're just not the only community, but it's all over the, the country, the world, and, and our officers are out there working hard and getting that off the street. I'm very proud of him. It's a street value of over $10,000. We also, I wanted to tell the board that I applied for a K-9 grant through the Berks County Community Foundation. Go on, you can go on their website, there's several grants for all types of activities if you wanna go on there. I applied for that when I was a sergeant in 2013 and we got $2,500. So I'm hoping, since we had just got the addition of two dogs, that they, they take that consideration and maybe we can get a little bit more, but, so hopefully that goes our way. With the amount of drug arrests that we made and forfeitures, when we make a forfeiture of money, so if we stop a car and, or make a drug arrest and there's a large amount of money, we have to give that to the county or the state. And as we do it now, we make the forfeiture of the county. And over the past few months, we made a significant amount of forfeitures and I asked John Adams, District Attorney John Adams, if we could have $4,000 of that money because we just bought a new police car in January and we needed a new laptop and the mount and the IT work to it and they provided it's $4,000. So I wanted to make a note of that, that that was excellent. Saved us $4,000, so that's all based on the officers going out there and doing their job and getting the money and then the county working with us. So I just wanna make that note. And our two officers that graduated from the Police Academy in February, they went through a two-week training program here with the TASER to get certified in the TASER, the firearms.
That's a video that's up, is that one of them getting tased?
Yeah, the officers got tased, the five-second. The reason why we do that, it's optional, but we recommend it because then when an officer's on the street and a person's not complying and he tases someone and they say, you don't understand what it feels like, the officer can say, yes, I do. I know exactly how it feels like and that's why you weren't complying and we felt that it was necessary to use it.
Have you ever been tased, chief?
Yes, I have. A long time ago. But when we first got the tasers, I, I did. So they went through the firearms and all their handcuffing training, baton, pepper spray, they got pepper sprayed also. And they are now actively on the street working with an FTO and they're doing very well.
FTO is a field training officer?
Field of Training Officer, so they're in their cars. If you see two guys in a car right now, it's probably one of them in the car. They're, they're day shifts for the next couple of months, so.
And one of the two officers that just graduated was one of the best overall in the, in the school?
Yep. One of our officers, Nate Daniels, there was 20 officers in the Police Academy and he received the award as the overall best cadet at the Police Academy. He's an excellent, both of them are doing an excellent job. They're, I'm very high on them, they, they were wonderful hires and we're very lucky to have them. So hopefully in the next few months, you'll see him in the community. Do you have a question for me, sir?
I do. Um, is there any kind of review going on with the, you, and school, whatever that's going across the country as far as safety issues? If you mean what's, what there are, just the school has done or is.
The town, the school district liaison and I have been having a discussion about that. I've spoken to the chief as I did last year, several years, about two years ago, there was a discussion about the school district, between the school district and township for providing an SRO, a Student Resource Officer. The school board at that time, at one point opted that they didn't care to do that. There's a new board now, we haven't gone back and had a discussion, so both, both myself and Mr. Chapino are having that discussion about whether there's any viability of bringing that back to the table.
I can tell you, since the Columbine incident, our, our, Columbine, Columbine, we have been training on a yearly basis with active shooter training. So this isn't something that we decide, oh my God, this happened down Florida, we need to start working on it. We've been training, we've been providing and preparing for this for over 10 years. We already have a plan in place before these incidents took place to do the training, active shooter training this summer at the schools. So we're, we're already, we met with them, Chief Nyermet met with them, I've met, has spoken, our Lieutenant Schaefer's the head of our training, firearms training, and he already has it set up for the training of this summer. So I can tell you that in Maryland last week, when they had the school shooting, the school resource officer took action and stopped the threat before anyone was killed. He took out the threat, so that's how important it is, so let's just make a note of that.
Thank you, chief. You have anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say about the school after the incident in Florida, they.
That's Jeff Anderton.
They limited, they limited the entrance.
Your address, your address, Mr. Anderton?
Oh, I didn't know that, say it. 1907 Orchardview Road. They limited the amount of entrances that can be used in the morning, just the main entrance.
Right.
And they have two or three people in there monitoring who come in.
Clarence.
Um, nothing really other than that, continue with the work at the parks, to Lorraine Park, continue on that. We got the back wall dug out, so.
I know, keep, you know, you need to talk about how much you hope it snows again before the end of March.
No, I know. I think it's safe to say it's over.
That's what you told me the week, week before last.
I know, that's what I said two weeks ago, yeah.
Every time you say that, we get a foot of snow.
Yeah, well, I won't say it, so.
So everybody should know that we're very low on salt and we can't get any salt, right?
Right, there's none available, so, you know, we had enough for one shot and we can still do that, so that's, if we get another snow, but that would be it. That's all I got.
Just a follow-up to Clarence, we've been working with Clarence and his staff with the, the wall and the layout of the, the walking trail and so forth, and once the weather breaks, hopefully everything will be ready to go with, with late winter and so forth. I've been also working with the staff, looking at our zoning ordinance and subdivision land development ordinance and reviewing the documents to correct any deficiencies or update any of the requirements, just to take care of anything or changes that we've encountered over the years from plans being applied, just to see if we can minimize some of the waiver requests and so forth that come in front of the board.
I noticed that we're getting a heck of a lot of shed setback variance requests with zoning here.
Yes, yes, we're looking, we're looking at that, that requirement as well. We've had a few, just some of the minor plan submission waiver requests and so forth. So we're trying to hopefully address some of those issues in our subdivision and as well as our zoning, just to take care of.
And will you work on them because I know you guys have a long list of things that need to be reviewed in our ordinance as well?
Actually, we've been working with Alicia from Sam's office. She's, she's been participating in our, our monthly meetings and we're hoping to have a draft copy for, for submittal to the planning commission for their review and comments as well before we present a final draft to the board supervisors. So that's, do you want me to mention? Sure. Just a follow-up to Norfolk Southern. We've had a, a situation where no work has been obviously taking place yet and we, during our PUC meeting, we found out that Norfolk has not submitted the necessary permits that were required throughout the duration of the situation as well as our review comments and so forth, but I'm happy to report that Sam, Sam's office did reach out to their legal counsel and it appears they will meet the obligations that they previously agreed to by submittal of the proper permits that are necessary for the waterway obstructions and so forth. It's imperative that we get these permits because these structures will be the ownership and the maintenance of the township, so this will allow the township in the future.
The bridge won't be.
The bridge won't, but the culvert that's being relocated to accommodate the relocation of Painted Sky Road as well as any storm pipes that are being installed.
If it's not permitted and there's an issue, then it comes back to the township.
Correct, correct. And it'll, this will allow the highway crew to make any necessary maintenance, cleaning and so forth that they are permitted under that permit requirement. So hopefully we'll have better news to tell you on the progress of the construction. However, this is a, this is step one, so hopefully at the next meeting we'll have a little bit more information.
The good news is they're gonna give us permits, the bad news is they're not starting this month.
We don't, no. Best of my knowledge, I would say no.
Is it, would it be possible to reach out to the, somebody and find, get us a possible estimation?
Yes, yes, we can, we can reach out and I'll coordinate through Sam's office and see if we can get a more firm date of construction.
Okay.
That's all I have for this evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sam?
Okay, I have a few things. The appeal date for the, on the Exeter Township School District litigation that we had, the appeal date for the orders has passed. I'm not aware of a notice of appeal having been filed in the two actions, so that means that those two, assuming that's true, and I don't receive something tomorrow when I, when I come into my office, those two cases are over and done with, no appeal was taken, so there'll be no further litigation on the bus barn.
Transportation.
Bus transportation facility, excuse me.
There'll be no litigation on the zoning hearing board decision for the bus transportation.
Or the declaratory judgment lawsuit filed by the.
Got it.
School district against the township. So that's good news. If that should change or anything should change, I will update at the next board meeting, but the, the appeal date has passed. I was asked, and I see Mr. Bukowski has walked in, in the back there, I was asked to keep the board apprised of any developments that happened with litigation concerning, and I saw that, this is relevant to what he presented on, the, if you wanna call it the gerrymandering lawsuit, the Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court did refuse very promptly to hear that case, so there would be no opportunity for the, this municipality or any municipality or anybody to participate, the case is no longer. So just wanted to bring that back to the board. There's not much we can do about it, but that is the decision.
So basically the township split in half, they have two representatives, neither one of them are even close to being local.
The current map, as it's been laid out by the Supreme Court, will be the map in all likelihood. Right. In all likelihood. Unless there's some new challenge that someone finds meritorious.
That's wonderful.
So that's that, the, uh, on the Pioneer Crossing, uh, issue that Glenn had, I think, originally brought up, the, we did request an extension of 60 days, uh, that extension was granted, uh, we're working with DEP to determine what the next steps will be, and I should have a further update at the next meeting, but we do have some, uh, you know, two months additional at this point to, uh, to work on this. And I do thank you, Glenn, for bringing that up, and also giving me the notes, the minutes from your meeting. Uh, the, we held an executive session, uh, before this meeting, where we discussed potential litigation matters, uh, associated with the audit of the RCC. And related to that, uh, special counsel that was retained by the board, Eckert Siemens Firm, has asked that, uh, you authorize them to bring the township's financial advisor in to help them assess certain options that they have identified, so I'd ask that the board direct me to direct special counsel to go ahead and do that.
Do you need a motion for that, Sam?
I, I don't need a motion, but if I have a consensus of the board, that's fine. Do I? Okay.
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Manager's report.
No additional report, ma'am chair. Looked enough.
Supervisor's reports. John? Oh no, you, talk about May Days.
I did, to, to...
Talk about it again, you made, you've actually made an official announcement now,
Yeah, you should have gone out today on, the official press release, there's a
right?
press release that happened last week, kind of new statement.
Leet.
That got cleared, um, approval from the school district, that worked with them last week. Uh, we went live in Facebook, we're excited to, kind of bring back May Days to what it was, we kind of want to get the school more involved, we kind of want to have different clubs, different groups, less of a carnival atmosphere, more of a community atmosphere. We got a massive act of egg this weekend from six to nine, fireworks, so...
How many, how many food truck vendors, how many food tr...
18.
18 food trucks.
So, we're excited, there's a great committee, that, there's, uh, plenty of us, about 10 core members that are really excited to put on a good show in May Day. So, more to come as we develop, that, I think Jeff, you haven't shown up yet, but, we're excited, we're excited to put a nice community event together, and, um, as we develop the event, we'll, you know, a lot of sponsors that help us.
Yep.
Um, I don't have anything, other than, I think, May Days is fantastic, and I'm, I'm gonna do a little sponsorship too, so...
Tomorrow, tomorrow that's gonna be, that's up.
Awesome, great.
Fantastic, that's it.
David?
Um, I think I made this comment before, but I would just think, I mean, a great piece of work, I think was mentioned already on the Parks and Rec Plan, it's been posted on the website, I think for all the, thanks to all the participants that went into making that document, I think it's 245 pages, um, I do think we should have a special meeting to discuss that, but I would encourage all residents to spend some time going through that, I mean, it's a nice piece of work, a lot of effort went into that, and I think that'll help be the face of our future community, so it's worth some effort on that. That's it.
Gary?
Um, I have nothing except it sounds good what's happening with May Days, what, what has been taking place the last couple of years, uh, unacceptable, and whenever we would go, the most fun that I would have would be down on the football field, throwing a football or soccer ball with my kids, um, now, so, uh, okay.
No Confederate flags this year?